Board of Selectmen meeting to order, but Thursday, November fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Time is now seven P M. All three selectmen are present. The Court Secretary is present. The Town Administrator is present, and recording for the town people of Dunbarren is Mr. Leo Martel. And who uploads this, Leo, to the website?
I was gonna mention that tonight. Linda Nickerson does all the uploading for me.
Kudos to Linda Nickerson for doing the blood tri-lick work to get it up to the website. Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, we have some old business first. We have two sets of minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the six thirty non-public meeting minutes, as written.
Second.
Any discussion in those minutes, gentlemen? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And just for the record, those non-public ones?
Will be screened.
Correct.
Yeah, while you're signing that, I'll make the motion to approve the seven ten regular meeting minutes for November seventh, as amended.
Oh, second motion. Any discussion in those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
the record. I'll start in the last row. Mr. Martel. John?
Don Larson, Cemetery Trustee. I'd just like to let everybody know that we're gonna be closing the cemetery somewhere around the first snowstorm. And so when that happens, we'll close the gates. Construction on the Cermains Garden out here may start tomorrow, if not first of the week by J and J. And we've got it all lined out. And we're gonna be out tomorrow morning and pick up all the old flowers and plastic flowers that are faded, stuff like that, get them off the cemetery property and that, so that in the spring, why they can put fresh out. If people wanna put Christmas bulbs on their graves, we've already got one out there for the holidays while they can. Rees Across Dunbarren will be putting the Bows on the reefs on the twelfth of December at our house, Thirty Two Birch View. And anybody who wants to volunteer to help, we're looking at maybe an hour, hour and a half right there. Two hundred reefs this year. And we'll be placing them on the fourteenth on the graves of the veterans in our cemetery here with the services starting with the Honor Guard from the Sons of American Revolution at ten A M. at Caleb's Statue. And then in front of the library at the monuments there.
John, what's happening on the twelfth?
The twelfth, we get the balsam reefs, and I got the Bows separate, so-
Oh, you decorate it?
Yeah, so we wire them onto the reef. And then Capital Well brings their trailer up. We put them all in that, park it out front here, and that, and then on Saturday morning, why we have them, you know, divided by the cemeteries and the troops squad. Surprisingly enough, with about two hundred of them, why everything's over with by eleven, eleven fifteen. It doesn't take long, because we've had about fifty volunteers every time. And, you know, that's five, six reefs per volunteer. So we've been very fortunate, and I hope this year we'll even have more people involved.
Any contingency for weather?
Regardless of weather.
Okay.
So we'll get them out there. The first year, we had like, you know, ten, twelve inches of snow, so. So it just varies. But all the markers are on the graves. The upright mark, or graves or monuments have a red floral marker in front of them, and the others have the tripods for the flat stones. Surprisingly enough, we got over a hundred flat stones out there, you know, ground level. And that, so there's quite a few. This way, the reefs stand up and more, more visible, especially in the deep snow. And that, now changing hats to the Garden Club, I wanna thank everybody in the community for coming out for Halloween. I think everybody had a great time, and we sure had a lot of fun putting it on. And we look forward to it next year.
Hey, I didn't think it was all right for like adults to go and collect candy. Like, I saw one of the selectmen pictures. He was holding a bag of candy.
Yes.
Seems like he was collecting it, wasn't giving it.
Well, you know, we had a real good mum sale. We made, we netted around thirty-eight-hundred dollars. And so the Garden Club now, rather than, you know, have people donate candy, we just go out and buy it, because that's what the money's for, you know, and all the, you know, the props and stuff like this. And so it's just, you know, being a lot of fun. This year, we added hot dogs, and people really enjoyed that, you know, getting a free hot dog. And we had a tip jar there, and I think they made a couple hundred dollars in tips, you know, just people appreciated what we were doing, so.
Well, kudos to the Garden Club, and kudos to the Cemetery Committee for doing a great job this year.
Well, thank you.
John?
No comments.
Okay.
Hi, Deb Trott here. I'm Chair of the Dunbarren School Board. I just wanted to kind of check in. I hadn't been to a meeting in a little while. Talk a little bit about, like, we started our budget process, which I assume you guys are gonna be starting to do also. We don't have anything, you know, it's just a preliminary look at it. So we don't have anything large on our, on our horizon that we are aware of at this time, or that we're planning. One thing that did kind of come up was things that we may or may not have done last year, as part of, you know, do we wanna look at things again this year? And one of the things that my board asked me to see was, did the selectmen want to work with us on an S R O? This is something that kind of organically kind of came up in conversation, that that was one of the things that didn't happen last year as part of our budget process. And we thought we would put it out there. There doesn't have to be a decision today. But we just figured we'd put it out there to see if this was something that the two boards could work on together. No harm, no foul either way. Again, we do support the program, but we also do understand that there are considerations on both sides for that. And we just thought we would put the offer out there to see if this was something that, you know, we could work on.
For, for the season, for this year?
Yep, for, to put on the ballot. You know, I know probably from our perspective last year as well, is that it would be something that would turn up as a ballot vote. You know, we wouldn't make that decision alone. We'd certainly put it to the, to the taxpayers to make that decision. But again, you know, I think it has to come from both of us. So we figured we would just put it out there to say that, you know, this is something that we all wanna work on together. So we just figured we'd start the conversation. And again, not looking for any answer today. You know, we're still in the early parts of the budget process, and there's a lot of things to consider, so.
Say, I asked the chief earlier in the year if he planned on doing something like that this year, coming into us for that. And he, he had stated at that time that he had no plans to come in front of us for that, so that's-
Right, and it's not coming from chief at all. It, it came from administration and the board to say, you know, is this something that we, that, you know, that we wanted to bring forward, to say if this was something, whether, you know, I would assume chief would still support it, because he could support it last year. And I think in general, it's a good idea. Whether we go there this year, or other years or not, I don't know. But like I say, this is coming more from the board and our administration.
I know one thing last year that was a big hurdle for us to get over when we were listening to it, is they, they went to the chief's level, give us the hours that that person would be working. So when they were going from part-time to full-time and not having definitive hours, that that person was gonna be at the school, it was a little-
Sure.
I know that the public was taken back by it a little bit, too, you know, that they were. They were looking for, if we're gonna bring somebody on and have it full-time instead of part-time now, for how much time they were gonna spend at the school, and have that like clear. And they were giving us like, very unclear answers to that.
Right, and, and that would be something that if we did work together on this, that we could flesh out a little more of the details. Because I think that was kind of when we did, you know, lessons learned, when you look at how things went, you know, you do that with every meeting, and, you know, school district meeting and all of that, your whole budget process, what did and didn't work. And, you know, and, and those were questions that the board had as well, you know, what, what exactly does this look like? You know, do we need more detail? Do the taxpayers need more detail and things like that? So again, you know, we'll put it out there. We have, you know, several months before anybody's warrant has to be, you know, finalized. I mean, we have until February, so, you know, we have time to look and see if we can flush something out, or what that would look like. And, you know, so.
One other question I have for you, Deb. We're gonna be working on our cost of living. Do you know what the school did this year for the cost of living?
I would have to look back through the budget and see what was initially proposed.
I think it was three, three percent for three years?
Right, so the teacher's contract, that's kind of where I was gonna go. The teacher's contract is for three percent. We gave our support staff in the budget that as well, because we tend to want to match that in the years past. Back in two thousand and eight, when we had the recession and stuff, we had, you know, some people not taking raises, some people, some getting one percent, some getting contracted raises and stuff like that. So we try to keep it the same. It, it would be similar for our administration. When we look at the S A U level, Bo was not giving the same percentages. So for, when we look at S A U, it looks like, although we haven't had our budget hearing on that, we will have that in December for the S A U. It looks like we kind of split the difference at closer to two and a half percent to, for administration at the S A U level.
At the S A U level?
Because I think Bo's was, support staff was two and a half percent, and teachers were two percent in Bo. So we sort of split the difference on that. We are, at the school, trying to make some of our, our salary levels, which are lower than districts around us. So that makes it difficult to staff. So that was kind of where the three percent came from, so.
That's a trend right now. When you go to the U S Department of Labor, and you look at the average weekly wages increase, is it's been trending at two point seven to three point one. So it'll probably average out at the end of this year at three percent anyway.
So you were spot on this year.
Right, and, and our teacher contract is the only one that we're obligated to. The rest of them are discretionary, but like I say, we try to, try to match that.
Okay, anything else?
No, any other?
Okay. I do wanna take a, take something out of our mailbox since you're here, and I wanna share this with you. Mr. Edward Medjuski basically sent a complimentary note, a thank you note, for the great job you did at the Veterans Ceremony, Veterans Ceremony ceremony on November sixth, and has sent to the selectmen, but I think it should really be passed to your principal, because he was the one orchestrating this.
Yeah, that would be lovely.
So, kudos to the principal. And I think it's our annual event. It's done really for the benefit, I look at it as for the benefit of the children, is that they get an appreciation, an education of what, what Veterans Day is all about. And again, I, I wasn't able to do it to sickness, but I think that's one example of a veteran who basically moved to Dunbarren, was very impressed by it.
Yeah, it's nice. It was, it's a great event that students do, the sixth grade students with the kitchen staff, they do breakfast, and the sixth grader, it's really, it's actually very sweet. You know, they serve the, the veterans and their families, and, you know, then they, the whole school goes out and does a flag ceremony. So it's really nice. It's, it's nice to hear. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. That'd be great. Okay. And you're the gentleman. You're up there. You're gonna be up very soon. I have a back row also. Can you send no, what, no, okay. Anyone else? One more?
I was at the Veterans Breakfast.
Yes.
And they really added to it this year. They had the choir, the music teacher had the choir there, and they sang all the military songs for us. And then we went outside, and they sang the National Anthem, and it was a very nice ceremony.
Better of the year.
Yep, it's very nice.
Okay, very good. Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment now, and I'm gonna go right to the agenda then. We have Ms. Maria, you know, Pancho, say Google, all right?
You did, okay.
Okay. But she's, she's a local charity who outsponsored holiday food basket program. And in the past, Dunbarren, I might, I've been briefed today, in the past, Dunbarren did some work with this organization, and we did food baskets. It's been followed by the, it wasn't really terribly well organized, and she's gonna give us an overview of the program, and to see how we can participate, if we wanna participate, and we'll share the facts and the nature of the program with us. So Maria, you're on.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you a little background about the Capital Region Food Program. In nineteen seventy-four, the first holiday food basket project started in Concord only, and served less than a hundred families. It has grown. It serves Concord and the surrounding seventeen communities, and now serves about two thousand families on an annual basis at the holiday time. One of the things that's so critically important about this program is not only does every family get a box filled with product for a nice holiday meal, they get a second box with staple items, so that sustains a family of four for two to three weeks afterwards. And that is important during our holiday time, because a lot of the kids who, in some communities, participate in free or reduced lunch, don't have that opportunity during the holiday time. So it sustains them during that period of time. This is all about hunger insecurity. We have worked collaboratively with Dunbarren and a number of other communities. And how it came to be, where we connected with Dunbarren, was through the welfare department initially, your human services, or whatever we call it today. Because years ago, Joni Callahan was the welfare human service director in Concord, and she played a major role with this organization. And we contacted all of the human services welfare directors in the communities that we service, and they played a role in making sure that those people in need would fill out applications, and we'd take care of them. We worked with fifty different agencies, human service agencies, social service agencies, the Department of Health and Human Services for the Concord area, CAP, a number of other ones, where they will give the applications to the potential recipients. We don't question if it comes from one of our partner agencies. We don't question eligibility. There are a number of people who don't qualify under the government rules.
Okay.
But they are living on the margin, and they need some assistance.
Okay.
And we don't turn them away. That's what our program's about. So we've partnered with all of these different agencies, and some of the people in Dunbarren that get serviced come from CAP, or come from another agency that you may not be aware of.
Okay.
And so what has happened, it shifted, I think after Brian Little left, or retired, or whatever he did, shifted to the church. So there was some confusion that, I think, this is what I was told, there was some confusion as to whether or not Dunbarren should be participating as a town, or whether it should be through the church. But initially, we came through the-
Welfare Director.
Yeah, because that made no sense.
Okay. My concern is, I wanna make sure that we can have a private procedure, where we can identify those individuals on the edge, those qualified and those on the edge, and where we can identify those people and reach out to those people. How does that happen? Because we have only a handful of people, which I know a welfare director is not overwhelmed in this community.
Right.
And we can only identify a few handful, where should we reach out to someone, and those few people? But there's not great numbers here. We've contacted the church, and the church has, does run a food pantry.
Yep.
And we've reached out to them. How can we, how can they notify them? Because I don't want them to share data that they have on there without, without violating privacy either.
Right.
And so we're trying to establish a process with the Town Administrator, where we gotta identify those folks, whether they would be wanting assistance or not. Sometimes there's a pride issue here, too.
Absolutely.
Is the church still doing?
No.
So they're not giving the turkey though for all of it?
This, this is the agency that, that basically has the lead on this, and has done it in the past, as I understand.
Right, so we give it to them.
Right.
We put it all together. We take it with the National Guard Armory in Concord, and we, it's a just-in-time operation, ten days. Build the boxes, put them in there, and ship them out to the satellites. We have eleven satellites, plus we deliver in Concord and Pennacoke. The way it's been done in the past is, if you're working in collaboration with the food pantries, and this is how it happens in other communities, working in collaboration with the food pantries, they talk to the recipients there and help them fill out the applications. Comes in, everything's confidential, so it's not an issue on our end. But what happens is, when it comes here, in the past, it has been delivered, was coordinated by the church, and they delivered it. There will be, like I said, coming out of different CAP organizations, whether it's Sun Cook or Concord, there will be recipients in Dunbarren from-
From those organizations. And that can be passed on to us confidentially, of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what happens is, we have this database that gets scrubbed over here, and then we do it by town. So when we bring the satellite, and it would be considered a satellite, Dunbarren Satellite, the person who's in charge is who we talk to, and they would get the list, they would look at the list, they would see the names, there would be phone numbers, there would be addresses on there. Because the recipients have already been talked to about this, they know they're getting it, right?
That's, that's my concern.
It's not gonna be a surprise to them.
That's, that's my concern.
It should not be a surprise.
That was the question I had.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Because they, they already know, especially if they're coming from another agency.
Logistically, how would this happen? Let's say, as would be, we're talking about Christmas, or we're talking about Thanksgiving?
We're talking about Christmas.
Understood, okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
On the same sheet?
Yeah, oh yeah.
All right. And so logistically, what would, how would that work? Say, we've identified, let's say, twenty families. And we have my name. And I think in the past, there was a pickup location, and they could come in a certain timeframe, pick up whatever, the packages were delivered. We just check them off the list and say, Merry Christmas. That would be it.
Right. So the way it works is, the applications come in to us, we put them in a database, okay? And then we provide a list to the satellite. So you don't, you can keep your own list, and you can check against the list, and you may have extra names on it and all that kind of stuff.
Exactly.
Okay. And what it has been said, because we didn't have coordination with Dunbarren, and we have to let everybody know in advance, we said that Dunbarren would deliver like it has in the past. Now, if you're not gonna deliver, you're gonna have phone numbers, and people can, you can tell them we're gonna pick up and all that kind of stuff.
Right, okay.
Okay. The way it works is, on December twenty-second, that is a Sunday this year, it's always the twenty-second, we ship out to our satellites. So we would ship out to you-
The number we, we requested.
Right. And sometimes, we've asked if you need emergencies, and we would give extra setups for you.
At the last minute.
Yeah, absolutely. So we would ship it out to you. We usually make arrangements to deliver it to you, and we would have it set up, whether standard, the customs, and we keep the poultry just all in boxes, so that you can put it together once it gets here.
Right, okay.
But we have instructions on what needs to be done there. It's pretty straightforward. And then you just distribute it. But it usually gets here somewhere between nine and nine-thirty.
Okay.
And whoever the person is for Dunbarren would come to a meeting in December, on December eleventh, at eight o'clock in Concord. And we would have the preliminary list at that point in time.
And we could add to it, if we had to at that time?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right behind you is Jeannie.
Yeah, we're gonna talk.
Okay, you know, you know Jeannie?
Yeah, we just met.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I-
So part of the issue is, just for context setting, we know that we have, in all of our communities, people who are, you know, experiencing hunger insecurity, for whatever reason.
Right, right.
And, and in Concord, we have been doing this for forty-six years in Concord. We've been doing it with Dunbarren for over thirty-five.
Okay.
Okay, so there's been some longevity there. But it augments the limited budget that you have, because of the requirement of having to take care of those in need. And so Concord has always seen this as such a huge, important part of what we do there. Same thing with Bo and other communities. So it's not, it's not costing you. We're not costing you anything.
No, no, I understood. And we made, we, I know our church runs an activity to support residents during the year.
Yeah.
And we've donated, the town has donated on behalf, because we don't have our own pantry, per se. We've donated to them. We also donate to Salvation Army-
Sure.
Out of our budget. And so this is, as you say, a perfect augmentation. And I think
Three copies of the same.
There's a list of Dunbarton residents who failed out being licensed for their dogs, okay? Okay, one, two, three. Boy, I was, I think we were in the hundreds last year, right? We're in the single digits, gentlemen, ladies, single digits compared to hundreds last year.
We're gonna sign just one or like crazy?
Jeannie, you'll sign? You saw the names? Cave, your name is on the list.
I see that, I'm okay. My cat is getting so big, some days, it's a lot of money today.
Okay, next item. Lynn, should I give you a moment, or are you good to go?
I'm done.
Okay, next item, we're gonna go right by the agenda, we're gonna follow, do a healthcare discussion for 2020 regarding our health plans. So we had the presentation last week, and we discussed five plans, and Barton, I want you to take the intro here if you want, but-
Well, we, I looked at the plans. I looked at the plans, and since our last, who worked on the personnel plan?
Yeah.
You know, and Mike had talked about doing something then, we asked him to wait. I had a chance to talk to a lot of councilmen, aldermen, selectmen, on the issue of healthcare. Now, I don't know what type of healthcare they have, but I know some of the systems they have. The ones that have a pretty good tax base in town are affluent, actually provide the healthcare to all their full-time employees, and some part-time employees, in some cases, that get thirty-two hours, and pay the entire thing. But again, they have a bigger tax base than they're affluent. Most of them charge a percentage of what it costs, and it can run from fifteen to twenty-five percent. So, and there was no one that had grandfathered, the ones that I talked to, I don't know if there is any out there, but no one that I talked to had grandfathered people in. So listening to the plans, and most of them have three insurances. They have a, like a mid-HMO that they buy into. If they want a point of service or the high HMO, they'll pay another difference to get that one. If they wanna save money, they pay the lower rate and get into the bottom one. And most of them do it on pre-tax dollars. So that's some of the research that I've done so far. And I do have a motion, you know, 'cause I, I kinda like the one we had last year. But I, I can read the motion, if we get a second, we can have further discussion. If I don't get a second, then-
I'll second.
We'll, we'll-
Just to read the motion, let's get on the table.
But this would be, the town will provide to full-time employees Plan ABSOS 2040, One KDED, with the employee contributing twenty percent of the cost of the plan. The town will offer Plan ABSOS 2550, Three KDED, to the employees that are grandfathered at no cost to those employees. However, these employees may participate, may participate in Plan ABSOS, One KDED, at the twenty percent contribution rate. Plan ABSOS, Three KDED, is also available to any full-time employee at the twenty percent contribution rate if they desire this plan. And the change would take effect January first of two thousand twenty. So those are the two plans that we had talked about last week, and-
I'll second that motion, so we can discuss it.
Okay, good. Because like I said, and I've talked to a lot of them, because we've gone through a lot of stuff over this past time, political and other events, where I've run into a lot of them. And I have to tell you that everybody, everybody, unless you're a town that's northwest of us, that pays for everybody's, oh, New Boston does too. New Boston pays for their full-time employees.
Other than the co-pays, I don't see much difference.
Right here.
Well, three thousand and nine thousand, two is a standard deductible. Yeah, I saw that difference, Mike.
Yeah, that's the biggest, a big difference. There's a savings here, because of the beauty of it, I'm talking about the beauty of this plan here. For one of our employees, he's relatively young and healthy, he wants to take a gamble, and wants to save a few dollars, and say, well, I'm, I never used a, never used a doctor except maybe once last year. This would be a good option for him, because he would save some dollars.
If you're using source of service-
It's even, even less costly.
Is you don't have any deductibles that way. And they all cover your physical.
And does your motion take care of any grandfathers?
Your grandfather-
That's, that's what I gave you in my motion here last year.
You would give your grandfather that people at no cost, this plan is a starting point. And then if they wanted to, they could opt for this one at a monthly basis.
That's, I'd actually give that to Jen, so we still have to put it in there.
Can I ask a question?
Which, which employees are grandfathered, first of all?
There's myself, Patrick Bond, and Linda Landry.
All present, and they're all present here today.
Yeah.
If you have questions on it, I'm gonna open, as a chairman, I'm gonna open up the board, because it affects three people directly.
So basically, you'd be amending the personnel plan, correct?
Correct.
Because right now, the personnel plan reads differently.
It doesn't do anything with the ones that take, you know, the stipend. It doesn't have any impact on, on them, but is, is the stipend is taxable. And there's quite a number of places that have gone to the twenty-five percent because of the cost where it's escalated over time, from when they started in their plan. It just was, what they actually do is, whether you have a personnel plan or you have a collective bargaining agreement, in the, when they negotiate with the people as to what they're gonna get, sometimes they're either gonna pay more for their insurance, so they can get the full impact of a wage increase, or they negotiate the wage increase down, so either way, you're paying something for it.
And as part of your motion, Bob, are we gonna do any health savings?
I did, because you can, after, we can talk about that after, you know, the, the other side, the one where they could put money aside, you know?
Yeah, my company did that, and it seemed to be a lot of people that used it for the first year or two. And then it seemed to fall off the health savings, because you kinda cap out in there, and then,
Yeah.
you know, you don't wanna keep putting money in there if you're not using it, you know?
Right.
So it kind of sat there stagnant, so it kinda fell off the, we don't do it any longer, in any words.
So I didn't even include that in, because I thought that would be part of a discussion. This is a motion, because it changes the personnel plan.
So we're affecting radiant beliefs for that?
Yeah, but again, one good thing is, it was different. Right, but the thing is, they can also get a plan, healthcare plan, may not be the gold-plated one, but they're getting something free, and that kinda goes with the spirit. I thought, it kinda shares some of the costs, which I was pushing for last year, but I think it's a little bit more generous than I was pushing. And I was pushing eliminating all grandfathered employees last year, a year ago. And this allows them to keep it, to get at least a minimum.
So they're not making them all eighty-twenty, but it's leaving with a hundred percent paid on one of the health?
Right, albeit it's not as generous, but the thing is, but-
Although they can participate in the other one, if they want, because it's less money.
Gives them a choice.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And so if they participate in the other one, they have to pay the difference between the two planes?
Right.
Right.
Would be the difference, or would be eighty-twenty?
No, no, it wouldn't be the difference, it would be the twenty percent of that plan.
Oh, so they'd go, go just like any of the other employees?
Right, so if you're breaking down, actually, it's shared. Shared, because if you look at the price of a plan, one's seven-seventy, and the other one's five-
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. You know, I can only surmise that when they grandfathered someone in, there was just those people affected, and they thought that there wouldn't be a lot of change, but there's been a lot of change across the healthcare.
The difference would be more than twenty, so it's actually to the benefits, to pay twenty. So you're actually, you're-
That's what I was saying.
Be more generous. I think it's a reasonable call.
Do you want a copy of the motion, Bob, or no?
What's that?
Could I get a copy of that, just so I can understand a little bit better?
Do you want one that I could have given Dave? Because when I printed them out for us, that's the size of the note.
Oh, jeez. I'm glad I'm not the only one that picked on. Just for, I talked to a librarian this week, and just, she's looking at how, how savings, how, how savings accounts. Yeah, and the thing is, she's working with her library board, but she knows it's gonna be, probably it's gonna be one of, one of the ones presented here. But she's looking at that, something different, the health savings account. And, but that's, that's the library board trustees.
Yeah, that's separate.
Yeah, and my concern is, the thing is, I don't want like a hundred percent plan. These are all reasonable plans, because they all have, yeah, and you see those deductibles, they're all, they show the co-pays, they're all reasonable. So I, I'm, I'm gonna let them make their own determination. But this is talking to the library trustee. But she was leaning towards that, but she's discussing it with the board, library board trustees. Okay, any more comments, Dave?
No, I don't really have any.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Where did you get this ABSO One KDED?
That's, that's what we have now.
No, the one we have right now is ABS zero-two, zero, S two-zero-four-zero, One KDED.
That's, that's what I have. Oh, no, wait a minute.
So you were redundant?
Let's see the original.
Yeah, it's, here's the one I, I think I corrected.
Okay, this affects two other people, I'm gonna take the liberty of opening up, if you got a concern, I'd be willing to have to listen to it. This is out of order, but I think it's out, but it does affect.
I'm just trying to figure out what the, these plan numbers, which one we're going to now?
We, we're gonna have two plans.
Right, I understood that.
One plan is what we have right now.
Right, which is this one here.
The first one, and it's the second one, immediately they're out, next one over.
So that's what, like, myself would be going to this one here with the nine thousand family deductible?
Yes, but no cost.
So actually, it's, it is probably in the scheme of things, it's the same cost as the twenty percent that we would end up paying because-
Probably a little bit, could be potentially a little bit more.
I just did quick numbers. Woody, the out-of-pocket at eighty-twenty would be one thousand seven hundred nineteen a year to do the eighty-twenty of the current plan. Myself would be one thousand two hundred seventy-three sixty-eight to stay on this current plan. And then Linda's already, she's grandfathered for herself, she pays twenty percent currently for her spouse, and she'd be having an impact of six hundred thirty-six eighty-four to stay on the ABSOS 2040 plan.
And the biggest differences in the plans, I'm gonna reiterate what Woody said, is that the, the second plan, though we would keep that in the grandfathered, you'd be paying higher for, if, higher deductibles and higher co-pays across the board. That's essentially the biggest difference. Okay, any, any more comments?
Yeah, this is a whole lot to absorb.
Okay.
Only because this is the first, I'm seeing this, I'm sorry I couldn't make it last week to, to do this. So I really need to sit down and examine the impact that it's gonna have.
We're a little bit under a time crunch here, I realize that.
Oh, I understand that, but I, I'm gonna be under a dollar crunch, so I need to look at that as well. And I ultimately, you're gonna vote the way you're gonna vote, but I just need to understand it a little bit more.
Okay, there's no decision by you tonight, but you're gonna have an auction of two plans to choose from. The higher deductible, higher co-pay will be free.
That's the second thing.
Second one.
Would be, you would pay, you would cover-
The hundred percent, as we're doing now.
For the grandfathered.
For the grandfathered employees.
So for me, it would be a hundred percent for me, and eighty percent comes back.
And for those employees who are not grandfathered, they could also let that plan, but they'd be responsible for the eighty-twenty.
Well, at a reduced-
At a reduced rate. In other words, they'd be paying, it'd be seven-seventy for a single person's five fifty-nine. They could be, in other words, a young person who's very healthy could say, I don't wanna take the, the lower co-pay, and I'm never gonna go to the doctor. I'm gonna save some dollars, but I wanna have a safety net immediately.
So in other words, we're not gonna have, we won't have an option between Plan A or Plan B, or will we?
You will.
We will have one, okay?
We have to pay.
You gotta pay the bills.
We have to pay higher if we choose the twenty-forty plan.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
I wanna make sure it's clear.
Thank you, I didn't quite get that.
Okay.
Good, when, what I'm looking at is, just from, just thinking out loud, and considering how this change is going to affect me, I, I notice the, it kinda stinks that, you know, five people are gonna be affected to keep the town's budget down, and I understand the cost, and, and healthcare costs are just ridiculous, but I'm getting older, so I'm gonna have more visits. I have a husband who broke his toe this summer, and the cost of that, because we had changed plans once before to the higher deductible plan, just the, the cost of that absorbed, the two percent cost of living increase that I got last year, it wiped that out just in one little accident. So I'm just thinking out loud, and, and reminding you of how it affects us. And plus, you know, I'm getting older, and I see more visits coming. So I'm, I know it's a noted forum for you, I just wanted to tell you.
Just so you feel a little better, Linda?
Yeah.
The average age of a worker in New Hampshire right now, the average age is fifty-four. So if you see a lot of young people out there, just think of the older people that are, you know, bringing that age up to fifty-four.
It doesn't make me feel any better. But thank you for trying.
Can I also make a statement? In, in your motion, you said that it would not affect the people getting the stipend, so the cost of-
The stipend, the stipend would stay the same as it is right now in the plan, other than the fact that it might change because of whatever plan.
My point is that you're allowing the stipend to be the eighty, the twenty-forty plan? No change?
Correct, yeah.
At, at their fifty percent of the town's portion. So they get a seven-point-four percent increase, because the price is going up, and then the three that are grandfathered get penalized or forced to take a lower, more deductible?
Well, you know what, if you add the cost a year, right now, for your three people, it's fifty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars and twelve cents a year that we pay for your insurance.
What's a stipend people, Bob?
Stipend?
And the stipend actually saves the town money.
Right.
Because it's, it's not, it's not the amount of the insurance.
Right, you say you're not changing the amount of stipend?
No, it's, it's the same as what the personnel plan reads.
Eighty-twenty, but, but that's gone up because of the eighty-twenty.
It's gone up seven percent, like, since the pre-임시 went up to twenty-two.
So it's twenty-two thousand one eighty-two.
And so does everyone that's taken the insurance, other than yours is still free. We haven't changed any, any-
So you're saying it's a stipend people?
So you're still getting a free insurance policy.
We can make it a little more seven percent increase than we-
Every one. Yeah, why wouldn't you give the stipend people that amount of money saved?
That was a question on the table.
What amount?
In other words, we, based upon the eighty-twenty plan, why could we just give this basis?
Stipend people, based on that?
And that's, that's up to us. That's, that's up to us, if we wanna do that, and I don't-
Because that seems to be in a hundred percent, eight of four.
Right now, the only concern I have is addressing, you know, the elephant in the room, which is, what insurance do we take, and how do we handle it? And like I said, I- Which is, what insurance do we take and how do we handle it? And like I said, I spent over a year now, because that was a while ago that we had, uh, and talking to different people about not how, what kind of healthcare plan they have, but how they handle their healthcare plan.
But just thinking about these stipend people, if this is our hundred percent paid plan for the.
It's open to anybody. It's, it's, now, those both plans are open to anybody. So if you wanted to, if you wanted to, we could use that as a basis.
Where we, where we isolated this is the fact that I made it the grandfathered plan.
Right.
And this would be the regular plan, and this is the one that you get for nothing if you grandfathered.
But we could use that, what I think Dave is proposing, we could use that as the basis for the stipend.
And, and you can, if that's what you wanna do.
And how much would that affect the amount of stipend people?
Probably drop them down a little bit.
Going to that base level.
They're currently, with this same plan, would be at three oh eight, uh, excuse me, one is grandfathered with a two person, so he's at three oh eight.
No, not the grandfather, not the grandfathered, I'm talking about the, the person, the, the regular employee's paying.
Stipend.
Right, the stipend. We have one employee that gets three hundred and eight dollars a month. The others get a hundred and fifty four dollars a month. That's under the fifty percent of the current, of the town's portion of the current plan. If I drop it down to the five fifty nine point three four.
Gotcha, okay.
I wanna see the difference there, too.
I mean, it would be nice if we had a lot of business in town that gave us a bigger tax base.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong column.
You could say you give it to all the employees.
Currently, the employees get three hundred and eight dollars a month for stipend in lieu of a benefit. And then one is grandfathered on their contract for six sixteen a month. So that's why I wasn't coming up right. So if we go down to the five.
Five five nine.
Three four times.
Do you take five 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 nine divided by two, right?
No, um, oh, actually, it's fifty percent of the town's portion. So you have to do five five nine point three four times eighty percent. And then it's four forty seven divided by two. That's correct.
Yeah.
So they would be dropping from three oh eight to two thirty, two twenty three.
And how many employees do we have doing that?
One, two, three, four at the single plan and one at the two plan, two-person plan under contract.
I think it's only fair that if we're gonna do the long-term employees, that we do the stipend ones as well.
So you're gonna be dropping the stipend. They still be getting a stipend, gonna be a little bit.
Right, I don't care what you do with that, but what I'm concerned with for us is the motion that's on the table.
Understood, okay. But I think we're gonna have that motion.
And then, and then the health trust and, and that as a stipend, we can adjust that differently.
Okay, um, any more discussion, Bob? I think you're good. Motion stands on as it is. Dave, are you pretty good with this?
Actually, you know, it's a pretty tough thing to wrestle with, but at some point in time, and they should have done this a long time ago, was remove the grandfathered clause and bring everybody in the same plan, just like maybe, I don't know if other towns had it before, but. And when I talked about grandfathered, people looked at me like I had two heads, you know, so.
It was done well before.
So I just tried to address this so that it's still taking care of the people that we have that are grandfathered while ripping everything away. But at the same time, if they wanna participate in the regular plan, it's still, uh, I don't think it's that bad a proposition.
Motion's on the table. Have you done any discussion?
Yep, I'm also in discussion. I wish you guys would hear any more from public.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna address, I'm gonna open up for the committee members again. We'll get ready to vote. But remember, you don't have to suck the plan tonight. You can go home and study how it impacts you and as a decision.
Six thousand dollars it just cost me.
Yeah, um, so, um, I'm ready to take a vote.
Has the town looked at anything else for insurance besides health trust?
Well, the thing is, I, when she was here, I asked her, she, this is the organization that basically is a, is a clearinghouse for healthcare plans for just about every municipality in New Hampshire.
I know there's other, I've talked to other towns or other municipalities that don't go through them, and their rates are different than.
I have checked in the past, maybe three, four years ago, and the quotes that I got, they said they couldn't touch these prices.
All right, motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, the thing is, there was a further discussion about stipends, and the thing is, uh, the question on the table, do we base upon the eighty, the AB zero two four slash forty or AB SO twenty S twenty five slash fifty plan? And, uh, one obviously creates a savings, lowers a stipend and, and, and for significant, by almost a seventy five dollars.
Yeah, 'cause I'm looking at this, and basically what we're doing here is we've got two plans now, which, this I almost consider our base plan now, and this is an upgraded plan where they.
Well, actually, no, 'cause if you look at the motion, that's the lower plan that these people can drop into.
Right, that's a minimum plan. And we're giving them a stipend on the minimum plan, that's.
Right.
So that's what, that's what you were saying, that's a base.
I think the stipend should be on the minimum plan, not on the maximum plan.
I don't have a problem with, with whatever you wanna do there.
Okay, um.
I just feel, you know, we get our grandfathered employees, they're taking a little bit. I think the stipend people are gonna take, it, it affects. You know, that way it doesn't affect just one group.
So the motion on the table, I'm gonna say, you wanna make a motion on that, that we base the stipend as based upon the lower cost plan, or you can just pay the plan, stay the plan specifically?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that our stipend, um.
Allowance.
Allowance from the town is based on the ABSOS S twenty five backslash fifty three K D E D plan.
Oh, second motion.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Um, area of discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um.
What did you wanna do with the health trust?
I mean, the health savings, you mean?
Yeah, uh, it's, sorry.
That's okay. We could, uh, one thing we could add as an open.
Open enrollment for health savings.
Yeah.
It's an individual thing that you pick or, or do anyway.
I think they handle all that too, right? They will.
Right, except there is a cutoff date, right? She said the following year.
I wrote it down.
Can't remember, yeah.
Put that right here, put that right here. Uh, deadline November twenty seventh, cutoff is December sixth.
No, I'm talking about the, using that health savings plan.
Oh.
Yeah, if.
And all I could think of, all I could think of is that someone would buy all kinds of bandages.
I think it's a calendar, it's a calendar year. January through December is.
And they cap it.
Right.
I'd like to, uh, like to make arrangements for her to come in and brief our employees, have an opportunity for employees who have questions to come in, and so they can help explain the details of the plan. See, they offered that last time. Can we get something scheduled, maybe we do now on December first?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea that we have all our employees that are affected by the health plan have a ability to come in.
During the day. Agreed, you think that's, I just like, because you moved, they're taking it for an action. Okay, am I ready to move on, gentlemen? Any more further discussion on health care plans? What are we missing?
Health savings, we'll settle up on that.
Health savings?
Do we wanna start a health savings account, uh, for our employees so that they can sign up for?
Let's see if this, I was gonna say, let's see if there's any interest in the tourist at the, at the meeting.
At that meeting, okay, that's a good idea.
That way she can explain the particulars of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Lean, could you be at that meeting too, so we can ask about that?
I don't have any issue if we wanna start one up, if, if there seems to be a number of people that want to do it.
Okay.
Like, why is here?
And that would be a deduction from their payroll to put into this fund that they would, that they would hold.
Right.
Uh, pre-tax, you're right, but the, I guess is what's unclear to me personally, is if I give a hundred dollars a week, I'm just using a big number. But, and then I don't use it at the end of the year, what happens to the money I just gave?
Pulls back to us, we split it three ways.
I think so.
That's what you need to ask her. I think that's what.
I think that's what she said. If you don't use it.
It goes back to the town.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Thank you, that's a good idea.
And that's, to me, I'd rather put a hundred dollars in my personal savings account.
It does, you know, I understand, but that's what she said last week. That's why I'm, that's why I'm concerned with that part of it.
Yeah, and I think they both understood the same.
Yeah, I understand that.
And I think it reverses.
That's the way I heard it too, and I.
Can't go back to the town, it's your money.
It does.
Well, it does. That's what she said. If you don't use it, you lose it.
That's why I said, you know, at the end of the year, you say, hey, I need all kinds of bandages at home and whatever, you know, just to use up the money, because otherwise you lose it.
But the thing is, when she comes in, that'd be, we'd reiterate that, those questions again, make sure it's clear. But the thing is, I'm glad I didn't hear it. I was gonna say that.
Oh, I know, I went home, I meant to come out, and she said, yeah, 'cause he's heard of this before.
Okay.
She said, yeah, you don't use it, you lose it. I said, we don't get it back? She said, no.
That's the way I heard it too.
That doesn't make any sense, man.
And that was actually a comment that the auditor made about the liability of health insurance when they have the health plan.
Health saving.
Health savings.
Okay, moving on now. I have inbox. Just say thank you for taking some inbox up early, gentlemen.
Are we not talking about, um, the percentage increase this week? That could be another week.
I think we, we, we can anytime you want. I don't think it's gonna change.
No, I think we can.
I don't know, is there a decision? I didn't even.
I, I think, uh, I think that we can talk about it now. I think Bob has done a great job of, uh, even pointing out as early as this week what this week's, this month's, uh, is going.
That's what I mean, is we had it on our agenda, and you've been pointing this out now.
Right. You know, unfortunately, New Hampshire hasn't followed that trend. We're behind. The average raise in New Hampshire's been one percent. But we've always chose to use the U.S. Department of Labor statistic, and they're showing a three percent raise. It fluctuates from two points, you already saw that, from two point seven to three point one, and I would say three percent for the year is how it's gonna come out. I would rather use their statistic than the one from Employment Security.
Now, we did two last year.
Yeah, and I.
It's absolutely, pretty much right on, because at the end of the year, it came out to one point nine.
Yeah.
So I don't know where somebody thinks that we're flush with cash, but, uh, employers don't seem to have a lot to give out.
Uh, so I'm, are you leaning towards, first off, we, this three percent?
That's, you know, it's, it's, for, for once at least, it's not the, uh, the racist massage or any decision.
I was gonna be a little tighter than you guys and go to two and a half, only because I don't wanna go from two percent to three percent, next year back down to two. I'd like to try and have it so.
You know, but you know.
Depends upon what, what things cost.
I was gonna say, with, and they've taken more out of the CPI, you know, uh, and so the CPI's at two point six percent. And I think the, uh, COLA, they, they brought it down to one point six percent is what people are receiving, social security are gonna get. And I'm looking at these, it's, 'cause you go to the same website, U.S. Department of Labor, and that two point six is, has been down and has been up. So it's been up to three point five percent for a while, so what's moving that back and forth is the cost of fuel.
Yeah.
So people trying to keep up though with getting groceries and everything, if you're looking at all of those numbers, I, you know, it'd be kinda nice to give them a three percent. And you weren't around, but at one time it was below one percent increase, right?
Point seven. That was a nightmare to calculate.
That's why we split it at two and a half.
Why, oh, can I butt in? Just consider how many years we had that point whatever, and then go to three percent this year because.
I mean, there was one year, there was one year we took nothing because we had that option to keep our hundred percent or our personnel plan, or take a cut on our health plan or a raise. So a lot of us took no raise that year.
Yeah, it was, it was very easy.
And to stay with the same plan.
You know, and I know you guys are talking from a municipality, but my level of work, we went eight years without getting raised, so. When I listened to this one year, they only had one percent. I got zero.
Right, but the, just to throw it out there.
Sell another house.
If you look at wages versus wages, I guarantee your wages are thirty thousand more a year than mine, without any trouble.
Yeah, but I worked for.
But, yeah.
Gentlemen, all right.
You're driving around a lot. Greg Duncan noticed.
Wait, we're, okay.
You know, wait a minute, when you made that point, that's what most communities have been doing is, before they could give someone a raise, they were negotiating 'cause of cost of health insurance to try to keep up, 'cause you're seeing seven point four. But other areas were seeing eight point nine, eleven point two percent. And then I talked to one of them, he said it went up over eleven percent last year, and they're saying, wow, where do you live, you know?
No, I'm leaning towards a three percent too, because the thing is, um, I'm, I'm already, I mean, I think some of our employees are taking a, a bite when it comes to the health. And so, uh, in my, and I think three percent is only the fair thing to do. And I don't think municipal employees are paid, overly paid to start with.
Am I gonna get the same thing?
You're gonna, I'm doubling your salary.
Three percent.
I've got a vacancy.
Wait, uh, and the thing is, we always made that, we always, uh, said we'd round it to a reasonable number to make, make the accounting a little bit better.
Really isn't a nightmare when it's a.
Well, it's just being, your accounting is hard doing the last.
All right, can I, can I just throw my Trump card out too?
Yeah.
You know, when a school janitor gets a three percent raise, and he works indoors, and I have transfer station employees who work under the weather, part-time with no benefits, the thing is, I, I hate to say it, I don't mind giving my part-time employees who work outside in, in the heat and the cold, a three percent. I'm willing to give them the benefit of the doubt.
Like, your Trump card was supposed to be, Trump's not gonna be in there forever. When the Democrats are back in, we're gonna have to go down again.
That's so true.
You think it serves as I know.
No, but the thing is, I, I could be an advocate for our town employees. The thing is, uh, the school did it o- over three years. I mean, we could promise, all right, we're gonna give a three percent over three years. What happens next year if it goes up six percent, the cost of living? We have an op- option to not give three percent. We have an option to go to full six percent, if that ever happened.
But you remember one thing, Woody? With the Affordable Care Act, we went from double-digit inflation in health insurance down to single numbers. And not this year. This year was seven point four, but last year in that sector, the number was lower for an increase than any other time. And that's 'cause more people are covered, so there was no bad debt to the hospital. Bad debt being, you don't pay your deductible, or your, or, you know, or your, or your, uh, copays or whatever, you know? Uh, 'cause more people are, and, and no one walked out, like leaving a bill behind, so, uh, you know.
I, I, I think that we should take care of our employees on the side. I just think.
I do too. I, I think the three percent is a, is a good idea.
Okay, that's what we'll go with.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Dave, are you gonna make it for me?
I just, uh, maybe look like the bad guy.
You got it? Remember, you're out for election.
I don't have the paper. I don't have the paper.
All right, I'll ma- I'll ma- I'll make it.
You don't have the paper either.
Well, I'm just gonna say it. I'm gonna recommend we make a three percent across the board for all employee, full-time, all full-time employees and part-time employees, including the elected officials. A three percent pay raise across the board.
I'll second Mike's motion.
All in favor?
Uh, aye.
And Linda, for the record, did you notice I did not single out the, the, uh, the elected officials?
Thank you.
That was just a joke about working full-time too, Woody. I wasn't joking about you.
I know. I'm gonna go get one right after I leave.
I'm doing that.
Woody, now you know he doesn't work full-time 'cause he hunts a lot.
There you go.
Hey, but the thing is, his defense is, gotta put food on the table.
There is a health form in there that you have to sign, but you're not gonna sign it today, 'cause they're gonna have to give us a mended, mended one that states that we offer the two plans.
I understood.
So I will get that for you to sign next week.
Oh, this one, yeah. All right, I'm gonna go through mailboxes now. Um, I gotta, uh, we have a proposal, we're getting into budget season, but the thing is, um, I'd like to just share a story that we had shared with me today. Um, we had Mr. John Swindlerhurst from the Fuel Service, who was at the, doing the, some fire station work, he's a volunteer fire department. He noted the fuel was down in the, uh, in the, uh, station. He took it upon himself to look at all the municipal buildings as a ser- customer service to us to make sure we're, uh.
Add oil.
Add oil to the run, the, the run heat. And the thing is, he's made a proposal for this year's contract, uh, this upcoming year's contract, similar to last year. It's twenty, we've got twenty cents above, uh.
Daily rack price plus twenty cents.
For delivery. And, uh, again, he, last year, recall, he was like two cents, a couple cents higher than the, some of the other local deliveries, but we opted with him last year because of his, uh, uh, customer service. but we opted with him last year because of his, uh, uh, customer service.
Yeah, I was going to say, you get the service along.
So.
I'm good with that.
Okay, I'm good with that too.
Yeah, same here.
Okay, so consensus, we're going to put that into the budget as a budget item.
Okay, I'll let him know.
Get ya.
We already did that last week, so.
Yep. Just, uh, this goes back to you, Lean.
Just, uh, an update on the, uh, the town bounds between Bow and Dunbar. Um, work in progress, as I understand.
Yeah, it is. Um, he reported to me that, um, there may be a deduction problem with the monument, so as soon as they have that available, they'll try to set it if it's.
I would like to encumber some dollars if we can this year before they.
I plan on doing it immediately. That way it's not a forgotten expenditure and then if it should happen to get set before the end of the year, then we'll be all set.
Okay, excellent. Um, mailbox, mailbox, I'll keep going here. I have something that needs to go on the website. If you're familiar with our signs on the roads, and we have this General Stark scenic byway, well, we're being invited to serve on, there's a byway council and it meets approximately four times a year. And there's a whole information sheet, what they do, they're looking for volunteers. If, I think it'd be nice to get some people maybe out of this group to look at this, so I'd like to advertise this on the, uh, on our hot topics and see if we have any takers. Is it, I didn't catch the deadline on that one.
I have to look.
Okay.
It was last week.
It was last week, okay.
All right.
I don't think there was a deadline, I just got that, I just got that today, so.
Uh, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't we already have Dunbarton residents on that, General John Stark scenic byway council? I believe Lorraine Adams on that.
Yep.
That. Yeah.
Well, we need to verify that. Maybe we can.
I think they're just looking for additional volunteers, yep.
Because we, we do already have some people on that.
Uh, yeah.
And it's a quarterly meeting that they meet here according to the email.
Yeah, four times a year, quarterly.
Yeah.
Same thing.
All right, we'll post that.
Uh, just, uh, for the record, we have, uh, one of our employees this week resigned, uh, in the town offices. We have a letter of resignation here and, uh, just a request for records. We're going to put that in our file. I can go see you, man?
Yep.
Okay, Woody, I'm glad you're here. This is for you. I don't know what the, this is for the Municipal Concord Regional Solid Waste Recovery Cooperative, joint meeting in Bow.
Next Wednesday.
Are you going?
Do you get a notice like that?
I get everything, yeah.
Okay, because that one actually went to, uh, the former selectman's address with the mail lady in Valiers, but the lady.
Because what happened was is back in the day, Ted was the representative and I was the alternate.
Okay.
And now I'm pretty, I'm the representative.
You are the representative.
And so, so we just think it caught up in their, you know, thing, mailing process.
Okay, so I did ask them to update the mailing, so when that comes in in the future, put it in your mailbox.
Yeah, they actually mail it right direct to me.
Oh, they do? Okay, all right.
Yeah, I, I got the package and basically that's.
So you're going to receive something like this?
Yes, yeah, and I have the, the minutes and the agenda and all that for the meeting.
Could you give us a, is there any highlights? Give us a, a couple sentences in email, that would be great.
I can do that.
Okay. All right, and as I, since I got you on the, on the spot here real quick, um, one of the delots from last week I want to reemphasize is the, uh, on the quotes for the chain link fans. We're leaning towards your option of chain link, but we need the quotes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been a crazy week.
I understood. And the thing is, my goal is to encumber the money this year. If they can install this year, fantastic. If they can't, I want to encumber the money.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right.
I did tell Justin one of you two might reach out to him too. Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to him.
Okay.
Do you have his number?
I can get it for you.
Okay.
Is it Justin? Is the one at the cemetery, trophy?
Yeah, it's, uh, three nine six six five six two.
All right, and now I'm going to open up for public comment. Is that Leo Martor? No? Okay. Comment, Leo, public comment. Linda, this is your public comment.
I've got some certificates to add to my folder, some of the classes. I've been taking a lot of election classes. Uh, this is my certificate from recertification, which I told you about. They filed a paperwork. And I think I forwarded some of the election stuff to you. Really worthwhile classes that, because we have four elections next year.
I believe, yeah.
It would be really great. You've got to start putting your minds in that mode, uh, especially with how much they scrutinize New Hampshire and the purity of our elections.
Absolutely.
Okay, excuse the pencils, come from Russia.
That's fake news. Yes, those are, those are coffee springs.
Uh, bring it back to the board now. Uh, just gentlemen, we have it non-public, but how, so quickly, they bought, anything else, Bob?
Uh, no, actually, we, you had the person here that was talking about the baskets.
Yeah.
So, uh, you, you stopped by, uh.
Okay.
I think.
Did I help address it at least?
Well, I kind of had some of the basics, that's why I was going to bring it up today, because she was here.
Yeah, because I've been busy in the office, Patty stopped in.
Lean, does Goslin do the work on the fire department?
You know, uh, come to think of it, John called me and said that they were there doing the work, so I don't miss anything if the work's.
Maybe reach out on email, see if they completed it, how it went for us, that'd be great.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Um, I have nothing for the general public, except that, um, um, we're coming up to the busy time of the year. We're going to need everyone to just, uh, make sure we get our work done. Okay, I'm going to make a now motion that we go into non-public. I got, I'm sorry, Paul?
I'm not special, I don't.
But we're going to, we're not going to have the meeting, we have to come into public again.
No, I actually don't have anything right now.
For, for the public, okay. Then I'll make a motion, we go into non-public for RSA ninety-one dash alpha, Roman numeral three, uh, paragraph.